I'm taking some time off right now because I gotta pay all my tuition. Because I paid tax.
When you're done, you can go to register until your balance is blowed out.
I'll wait soon. I can tell it's not on the menu. I'm just kinda waiting till we burst right now to see.
I call to order the Waverly City Council for September 18th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer? Motion seconded. Second. Motion seconded, council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
No, it comes to our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the August 28 minutes also as distributed by our city clerk?
For the borough.
Second, please. Second. Council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
No. For our official minutes, the guest council person for this month will be here next week, hopefully. This time, I'd like to entertain comments by the public on any items not on the agenda for this evening. You know that we have our community garden effort to have a little update on, so we invite them forward.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you what we've done at the gardens this past year. My name is Joe Dunn. I'm the garden supervisor of 2017 and other members, Ron Lane and then Bill Decker, that are a very important part of the gardens. We've had a very good year down there. And as the production today is 8,305 pounds. The appearance from the information I got, that is a record. The previous record was 2014 at 5,300 pounds. So, we've done very well, but that's attributed to a couple of things. We've had, I think, weather cooperated. Of course, you know, in the garden, then we need, we need to have a decent environment and weather to cooperate. You know, we didn't get a lot of rain, but we had timely rain. Maybe the first part of June, we had to water quite a bit, and that helps when we can use a city hydrant right there to, to water when we're a little bit dry. And, but, as we progressed along, August was a little bit cooler than normal, and in the garden environment, a little bit cooler weather is nice, so we can, you know, we're able to keep up with the harvest and so forth. And, and perhaps a big, a big factor this year, we've had quite a few volunteers that have helped in, in the garden. When you harvest 8,000 pounds of produce, everything's by hand, and that takes a fair amount of effort in it by, by many people. Many people make short, light work. But, you know, I would like to, some of the groups that we've had, of course, we have individuals that come occasionally, or some, some folks come on a very regular basis. Of course, Bill here is down there almost on a daily basis. And then I, and then one of our neighbors, Lane, he's down there on a very regular basis. And Dave Arns, who many of you may know, he's part of the Exchange Club, and he's a math teacher at WSR. And he, he has put forth quite an effort as far as his presence, and then he came up with the idea of having school faculty come down one day to harvest. This was right when school started. And the produce then went to the school lunch for the next couple of days. And I thought that was a really fantastic idea. And that, that was Dave's, Dave's brainchild. But, over the, over the year, we've had, you know, the Waverly, members of the Waverly Exchange Club come down, Merrick Forbes, Bill has helped some of the Orkberg students this past summer. We've had another group of business and professional women come down and help on a given night. And again, many, many hands makes, make light work. And also, and individuals come down on a very frequent basis. And again, you know, we can always use help. There's always a little bit more that needs to be done down there. Maybe, you know, clean up a little bit, maybe, you know, just keep, just a little, you know, make sure we're keeping ahead of the harvest and so forth. Of course, the produce is donated to many organizations in the area. Northeast Iowa Food Bank would be the, the major recipient, but the, we also donate to Waverly Senior Housing, the Senior Center, Cedar Valley Friends of the Family. I know Bill has taken produce to agencies in Denver as well. So, so the produce gets distributed to many organizations locally. We probably have, oh, I don't know, we're, we're getting to the end of our harvest, our cleanup date is at the end of the month, and we're probably, I don't know, we're probably gonna have two to four, two to 400 pounds more of produce, unless we get an early frost and we're done. But, the outlook doesn't look that way. So, what we're doing now, we're finishing, you know, we're, we're still harvesting some. We're getting ready for next year as the plants are spent, we're cleaning them up. We're planting a few cover crops to, for preparation for next year that helps soil structure and whatnot. And, and so, we're, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're working on this year, but we're thinking ahead for next year. And I would like to thank the city for their support as far as helping with, you know, providing the land and for preparation. I know one day to fill up, you know, some of the raised beds, we had, we had the city down there with a loader tractor filling, helping us fill, raise beds for us. And of course, we have the water down there, and you can irrigate during the dry spells, that certainly is helpful as well. And finally, I'd like to present Bill with a gift card, because again, I, I mentioned Bill, Bill here is countless hours down there. All right. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And that's a token of our appreciation for Bill's efforts. He, he by far puts more hours than anyone else, and, and his contribution is a big part of the garden's success. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Good. I make a couple of comments and ask a question. My first comment is, I'm really impressed with what you folks do. It's a great thing for the city. Second comment is, it sounds like, if it's true, I'm, I'm impressed with the fact that high school kids are willing to eat vegetables. And my, and my question is, do you know how many volunteers altogether are involved during the course of the season?
We'll work that out at the end. I've been keeping numbers as we, as we move forward, and I...
I think you better come and remind us. Start over. Listening, public watching.
Okay. The question is, volunteer hours and, and so forth. And, and as we, each day, we record the number of volunteers down there, and at the end of the year, I'll, I'll, I'll add up the number of man hours, volunteer man hours that are put down there. And I, I hope Bill keeps track of his own hours, because he's there when no one else is around, so.
We'll look forward to that number later.
Any other questions?
No, but I'd like to express my appreciation, too. I, I was down one day, I'm embarrassed to say, just one day, helping a little bit with planting and watering, and have it on my calendar with best impressions, and haven't been that. But, I was impressed with the organization, the size, the quantity of things that are planted and harvested, and the places to which they go. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it. Again, we appreciate the city help. And, and I guess, I guess this, this patch should illustrate the, the potential, the hidden potential of urban, urban gardening that, you know, of course, at one time, there were houses there, and we were making the best of a bad situation, but I, I'm just saying that with, you know, with some help from other nature and so forth, and volunteer help, that we're, you know, we can produce an awful lot of food from a small patch of ground. And I, I think there's even room for maybe even, there's always room for improvement. But, I, I think, you know, there's, you know, certainly Waverly and other cities, I think there's a place for urban gardening to, for land utilization and for, you know, to use that human potential that's out there, too. So, thank you.
Can you say anything about the orchard?
I'll have Ron do that.
Thank you. I'm Ron Lanth with the Waverly Exchange Extension. We were gonna follow this even from the first planting days back in 2010, when Tab and Mark Anderson called a meeting. The orchard itself, this is the first year we're harvesting. We're at 360-some pounds. There's about 60 trees out there. We've been adding four, five, 10 a year as grants allow, so, in fact, I was harvesting tonight on, earlier before I got here. So, it's, it's kind of long. There's seven varieties there, so we got cross-pollination. Couple of new varieties we got out of Cornell University that are some new genetics, so we'll try those out there, too. So, yeah, it's, it's intriguing. The apples have been going to the Food Bank, a couple of local churches have picked them up. We just started a couple of weeks ago, so, so far, so good. And thank you for the city. This has been a great partnership, and everybody who wants. Yeah, we're representing from the Food Bank here for you.
Hello. My name is Janelle, and as Ron said, I'm from the Northeast Iowa Food Bank. I'm in Americorvista there, working on food security. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the Food Bank for all the work that Waverly Community Share Garden has done, and also just the great partnership that we have with them. They, of those 8,000-plus pounds that they have produced at the Food Bank, we've received 3,917. And as Joe said, I'm sure there'll be more, some more donations, but we really do appreciate the partnership that we have with them. It's pretty unique. We get those local donations, and then we can send it out locally through different programs at the Food Bank, whether it's in our pantry or in the mobile food pantries also. Thank you.
Tab, is there any final words that you need to make?
That makes us look weak.
The city council charged me years ago with, with using the floodlots on a productive basis, and this was one of the things we did. I, I want to make sure that you know that Ron Lanth has, has had a major, major role, and in fact, I'm not a farmer, I did not, I was not a garden kid or anything like that. So, basically, we listen to what he says, and we do it. We started with flat grounds, raised about 500 pounds the first year, but we were about a month late in planting. And then Ron started making us build raised gardens, and we're up to, what, 66?
65.
65 raised gardens. And not only does that make old men like me not have to spend that, been over as far, but it just seems to be a very efficient way to raise food. And we hope to continue this. If we can expand it, that's fine, but we really appreciate all the volunteerism that we've had this year.
We have nine items. Anything not on tonight's agenda? We have nine items on tonight's consent calendar. We have two Stanley consultant bills, one for the FEMA nap revision, one for Parkway East. We have two McClure engineering bills, one for the road, the airport extension, and the other for 20th Street Northwest work. We have T and W grinding and compost. They have their, they did the shearing logs and grinding brush piles, and they have, they have a bill to pay there. We have a wine permit for Meyer Pharmacy. We have two liquor licenses, one for OP and the other for East Bremer Diner. And we have the cash disbursements for the month of August to approve if there are motion. I move the approval of the consent agenda. A second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
No. A regular business item number one is to amend our city code zoning district designation titles to accommodate the new R1A and C2A districts, which expands the districts from 14 to 16. This is the second reading. Let's go directly to a motion.
I move the second reading of ordinance 1026 and ordinance amending chapter 100, section 100.3.01. Districts designated at the Waverly Municipal Code amending district designation titles.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. Council discussion. Public input on this matter? Roll call, please.
Hengis.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Wodson.
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 1026 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number two is to extend the block line of property 2701 East Bremer Avenue, east by .43 acres to its natural boundary of a creek. City administrator, this comes, I think, with unanimous approval of planning and zoning, which is important, but are there any city concerns on this one there?
I don't believe so, sir. It follows the comprehensive land use plan, which is one of the major things you wanna look at. And again, it's just a minor movement of the subdivision line to the natural boundary of the creek, so I don't believe there's any issues with this. Now, if it was any hands.
Motion, please.
I would move resolution 17121, a resolution approving a parcel GG, minor subdivision plot for residential property at 2701 East Bremer Avenue in northeast Waverly.
Second. Motion seconded. Council discussion on this matter? Is there any public input? Roll call.
Hengis.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Wodson.
Yes.
Resolution 17-121 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number three is a five-year farm lease agreement with Nicholas Miller as part of our airport safety zone project. City, and again, for the public, these are terms of part of the purchase agreement, and just automatic.
This is just the lease of that property, the land property, back to them or the farming that they were going to be doing. It's a five-year lease, payable every year. Nicholas Miller, the guest farm, the grounds, so naturally, we would extend that operating and continue to do so. And that's really what, what is before you, is a fairly standardized lease and use for other individuals farming, and at the same price, others are paying as well, so it's a fair market.
Good. Motion, please.
Move approval of resolution 17123, resolution including assigning upon this, number of land property, LLC Nicholas Miller for the Waverly Municipal Airport Safety Zone Project for the amount of $225 per year.
Okay. Is there a second? Second. Motion seconded. Council discussion.
Was the five-year time period, was that, was that part of the purchase agreement?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Does it, I mean, I understand that was part of it, and therefore, I approve this, but it seems like a long time.
It was done because of the, the presence of the machine shed, that's gonna be used for that five years, and there's other improvements. It'll take a couple of years for the project to get the house removed and some of the other trees cleared. Once that's done, then he'll have all those total acres that are now taken out by trees or building. And so, that the number of acres that he'll be able to farm actually will increase once those are removed. But in the meantime, he gets the use of the machine shed, so it had to be kind of tied together for that five years.
And the price is locked in, the lease, the rental price per acre is locked in for five years as well?
Yes. It's locked in for five years. They're actually paying rent on the entire, all the acres, even though some of it's local, some of it's not. And that's just to take into consideration the use of the machine shed.
Thank you.
Good questions. Others?
Doesn't have anything really to do with the farm lease, but I've been asked just to remind folks that the fire department would like to be able to use the house for training at any given point, either non-liberal or even lighter training, so had to get closer to bringing it down, to keep us in mind.
Other discussion? Public input on this matter? Roll call, please.
Lampy.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Wodson.
Yes.
Hengis.
Yes.
Resolution 17-123 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number four is to complete our downtown alley reconstruction project. Let's go directly to a motion. I move approval of resolution 17-124, resolution accepting the downtown alley reconstruction 2017 project as complete and approving change order number one. And final pay request to Feldman Country of Dyers Delire. Got a little missing stuff in there, Mike. I'm sorry, I read the wrong line. Want me to start again? Change order, approving change order number one for, then pick it up. For the final adjustment of quantities in the amount of $4,363.50 increase and final pay request in the amount of $2,162.23 to Feldman Country of Dyers Delire. Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. The council discussion.
Am I correct in understanding this, that the increase is primarily the result of materials? Isn't it, isn't it a pretty significant increase in the overall price?
The west end of the alley, we were intending to, to basically salvage, but due to extensive utility work that occurred after the plans were developed, it was decided it would be in the best interest to remove and replace the last, I think it was the last 30 feet of the alley, plus the alley approach.
Okay. Thanks.
Great Easter rest on that, Alan.
It was the west end that, along First Street that we...
Right where all the activity was.
We rebuilt some curb and gutter and reset the intake, and, and so, we expanded the project a little bit further than we originally intended, but that was, you know, kind of the right thing to do, given the condition of the alley as the result of some construction activity that took place this spring.
And I think we all agree, looked pretty good.
Yeah, it was in favor of the project. That explanation helps a lot.
Yep.
Thank you.
Budget, still within budget, even with the addition, so all been fine.
Thank you. Public input on this matter? Roll call.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Cher.
Yes.
Wodson.
Yes.
Hengis.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Resolution 17-124 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number five is a sewer main extension and upgrade for the Robert Denny 218 property, just north of the Quick Star building. City administrator, the public, how, how will this work?
We've been working with Mr. Denny to run a sewer line across his property to the Centennial Oaks Outlet A portion, or the driving range that will soon be developed. This will allow us to make sure that there is proper sewer put in, connected correctly on the Fourth Street, and it'll allow us to assist in that, as it will benefit greatly the city overall when that development takes place and it starts to occur. And, and so, that was really the, the reason why we went ahead and partnered in with Mr. Denny to get this done, and he was very generous to do this and partner in with us. He sort of did not have to, and made it a very sensible approach to getting something accomplished that was necessary in order to allow it to be developed going forward.
Thank you. Yes, we're looking forward to progress there. Motion, please.
I move approval of resolution 17125, a residential approving a development agreement with Robert Denny to contribute city funds for installation of a sanitary sewer main extension from Fourth Street to Outlet A of Centennial Oaks Golf Club Edition.
Or, a little more?
That's all I see on...
It's not a hot, I was gonna say the same thing. It's not, it's not a hot line to pull anything down or something.
Yeah, there wasn't a, the trash wasn't there either. To finish it out, the addition of the Centennial Oaks Golf Club Edition for not to exceed an amount of $31,730.
Second, please.
Not that white check.
Second, please. I seconded it. Motion seconded. Council discussion on this matter?
I wonder if maybe somebody can just fill us in a little bit more on, on the detail. I'm, I'm supportive of this project, but because of the glitch here, could somebody just talk a little bit about, about that?
And when we first saw that the driver rage could be developed, we were trying to figure out the best way to get a sanitary sewer connection to that property. And we also saw that Mr. Denny was starting to develop his, the old automotive store, and he had, he has plans for potential development of additional ground around there. He would have had to put in a sewer service to his own additional construction, if you build a new building there. And so, we discussed with him the idea of just going through the parking lot, underneath the parking lot with a main, and then he would connect to that main just as if somebody else would connect to it. So, we will have an easement, a main through underneath his parking lot, and he is, will be able to connect to it for his future development of additional buildings on that property.
And the $31,000 is for...
That's actually the bid for the entire project, so we assume we're gonna pay a little less than that, because he'll get some benefit out of this himself. But he's also giving us an easement and a 30-foot easement across, and a water main underneath his parking lot, so.
This is certainly the shortest route for us to...
Yes, the shortest extension. And the developer of that property will have significant land, and they'll still have to extend that main, you know, the connections to that main into their property. We're just getting it to the edge of their property so that they can hook into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions?
Budget-wise, is this coming out of?
It's either gonna be, we, we put it in our urban renewal plan as a project, so we can use tip monies, and it could also be used out of the sewer fund that we use, I believe, because it's gonna be providing...
This may be almost completely irrelevant to what we're voting on, but it does raise, make me curious, what, what does Mr. Denny have in mind for his property? What's gonna become of that building?
Well, it's, it's actually configured for a potential of at least, or at, at most, four separate stores. Those stores could be combined, the storefronts could be combined, so you could have one double. It's like saying there's four units, but you could have one or more added together, so it could be a two, or a three, or four unit. And he's hoping to have the parking lot done so that he can start marketing the, it's taken a little while. There's gonna be some work to do with that parking lot and getting it connected with Quick Star. They've been working with us on planning for, for how that in and out will happen, and how it will work with Quick Star, so that there won't be so many conflicts. There won't be, they won't connect their parking lot right up front by the, by the intersection. They'll, they'll be going into their place and back more along where the building is, where the Quick Star building is. So, that will keep some, some ability to stack cars in there without having problems. We're trying to minimize and help them, work with them. Their, their engineers are working with us in quite some time on this, so we hope this is gonna be a successful development.
So, it's gonna be a very compact split mall, it sounds like?
It's, it's sort of that, yeah. And then maybe a freestanding building or two. It's a fairly deep property, it's a fairly good-sized property.
Thank you for your economic development hat. You do very well. Thank you, Bill. Public input on this matter? Roll call, please. Public.
Just a quick question. Is this just gonna be sewer, or is there gonna be a water main put back in?
Just, just sewer.
Just sewer.
Why are they different? Other public comments? Other public comment? Roll call, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Wulston.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 17-125 is unanimously approved. Sir, general staff comments?
I don't believe we have any, sir.
Then I would ask if you have any council comments. Maybe we'll start with Dan.
If you haven't been on the west end of Highway 3, it looks like they've taken all the barricades down there, so we've got four lanes to drive on and it's a joy to do that. I do know that the businesses are being impacted with the current construction. It's not quite as easy to get to their back doors as it is downtown, so I would just encourage folks to frequent the Jimmy John's and the family home video and the sandwich shops on that end of town. They certainly need our support when it's difficult to get to their front door.
And Waverly newspapers.
Yeah, Waverly newspaper.
We get a lot.
Yep. It's just tough to get to the front door or even the back door in those sections, so.
Mike, just to follow up on that, just want to ask Mike, now that we have that section finished up to KISI's, when should we expect to see more demolition going on from there further on toward Warburg?
I hope that'll be next year.
Okay. Thank you. This is Wulston.
No comment.
No comments.
No comments. No comments. No.
This is very noteworthy, public. Okay, mayor, a comment. Just announced that we've got a thank you note from, to the city here from the Iowa State University Extension and Outreach Community and Economic Development Office. They had an academy for all kinds of, for clerks and deputy clerks and finance officers, administrators and Carla Geir attended. And so she was the outstanding, no, okay, but she did well and has this nice, nice letter of approval, but thank you from, you wonder why the city moves so smooth a lot. It's because not only is Carla on the trade, but she keeps up. So, thank you Carla for your good work.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Read her.
Second, please. All in favor, signify with yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Adjourn.